Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education meeting of May 17th, 2022. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. A moment of silence this evening is for Alice Seferian, who worked in our cafeterias, and Bob Zion, who was a humanities teacher and coached hockey. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We should jam that one.
Okay, Mrs. Strickland, we have the role call. Mrs. Catters, here. Mr. Shea?
Present.
Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
And Mr. Savick? Please silence all of your personal electronic devices during the meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
So hold.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Role call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Catters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes. Item five is staff and community recognition presentation. It's your turn, Mr. Gregory.
You know, it's interesting, board meeting to board meeting, like this is, the May's one of the best because we do get to recognize so many kids at this one, and we do run out of seats. What's amazing is we are packed wall to wall. Last meeting, you know how many we had in here? Two people. So it was completely empty. So we like this a whole lot better when we get to recognize so many wonderful kids and their families to come out. So we're just gonna kind of go through this in a very casual way. I'm gonna read the names, say a little bit about what the accolades are that we're representing, and then ask a couple of those individuals to say who they're with, and then we're gonna go through the agenda. If you don't have the agenda, we have some copies on the back table that show a single page if you just wanted kind of the people that we're gonna be recognizing tonight. And then we're gonna go into our career tech, and we're gonna recognize all those individuals. So as we do each group that's on the agenda, stay up here, and then we're gonna do a picture with the groups all together in front of this background if we can squeeze them all in. So it won't take long, and when we're all done, when we get done for career tech, it is all right if you all stand up and head out. You're welcome to stay. You're all invited to stay, but I have a feeling it'll be a mass exodus, and that's okay because we're here to just recognize you in front of our Board of Education. Many of these folks don't know about your accomplishments, and tonight's to do that. So we're gonna start out with the five athletes that were all state this year. Obviously, you know, going to state in anything is a phenomenal achievement. So we each year try to take and bring all those athletes that qualified for the state meet here. Tonight, we have five. So we are gonna start out with Jocelyn Jersey. So Jocelyn, come on up. Give her a round of applause. Jocelyn is a three-time state qualifier in swimming. I know from talking with her family over the years how dedicated Jocelyn is to swimming. She's going to be going on to, you know, a university clarion, clarion practice, gotta say that correctly, and swimming at the collegiate level, which is a phenomenal accomplishment. I know we're all proud. And she, along with many others, have helped raise what our swim program is today, which, you know, when she started back, probably you started when you were young, but coming into high school, I don't know how many we had, five, 10 swimmers. We kind of swam with other folks, and working with the coaches here tonight and others built that up to over 30. And we work with the Y, and we've really done a lot for swimming, and in big part because of this young lady's achievements and what she's done to model for all the kids and getting kids involved. So, Jocelyn, we want to congratulate you tonight on your accomplishments throughout your high school career. And if you would, if you would be willing to share who's here with you tonight?
My mom, dad, Coach Rod, and Coach Carla.
So your mom and dad are in the back. So if they would wave in the back. And Coach Rod and Carla are over here in the side. So again, we are very proud of you and congratulations on everything. And please stay here while we bring up the other ones if that's okay. Everyone, I think who knows Clay knows how successful our wrestling program has been for years and years and years. And again, this year is no different. We are very proud of all the athletes in wrestling from junior high all the way up. And I know there's little kids all the way up, and it's just that it's one of those machines that just keeps on rolling. And we're extremely proud of all the individuals in the wrestling program, but four of those individuals had a heck of an accomplishment this year. So, Candy Deluna, please come up if you're here. I don't know all of you personally, but come on up. So this is where my lack of knowledge is gonna come in. So come on over here. I'm gonna ask you what weight class that you made it to state in and what grade level you're in.
I made it a 106. That's the weight class I'm in. And this year, I'm a junior. I'm gonna be a senior next year.
Right. So hopefully another year for Candy. And can you say who's with you tonight, if anybody? If not, the whole wrestling crew?
My mom's in the back right there, plus the whole wrestling crew that I was with this year. Awesome.
Well, congratulations. We are very proud of your accomplishments. Thanks for coming out. Okay, Mike Medina, come on up. All right, you kind of know the drill. We're gonna kind of do the same thing. So if you could tell a little bit about yourself and weight class?
I wrestle 113. I placed sixth this year, seventh last year. And I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my girlfriend, and everyone of the wrestling team.
Fantastic. Well, congratulations. We are very proud of you. All right, David Colmignori, is he here? No? Well, we want to congratulate him for his state placement. We will make sure he gets his certificate. And Ty Kha, come on up. Ty's a multi-sport athlete, a name that if you follow Play Sports, you're gonna know well. And he's got a big future ahead of him, as do all these folks. So Ty, the same kind of drill. If you'll tell us a little bit about what your accomplishment was and who's with you.
So I wrestle 215. Last year, I placed eighth. This year, I placed second. And I'm with my mom and dad.
Fantastic. Well, congratulations. We appreciate it. Oh, that's all five. So again, we want to congratulate all the coaches on their achievements, getting these kids to where they at. I'm sure many of them started when they were young, and our future is still bright in wrestling and in swimming. And congratulations. Let's get a picture of the four of them. All right. All right. Thank you, guys. We appreciate you coming out tonight. All right, we're gonna switch just a little bit away from kids, and then we'll go back. We also in May recognize our teachers and our staff that are retiring. So we have a couple of them here tonight, but I'm just gonna read the names of some of those that aren't able to make it. Sharon Moran is retiring this year from Facet English Language Arts. She's been with our district 37 years. So let's give Sharon a round of applause. One of the teachers that is here, I think I saw Deb Evans. Deb, you here? Come on up. There you are. Come on up. Deb is a music teacher at Coy Elementary. My notes say that you've been here 23 years in our district, and I'm sure maybe longer. And I don't know if you could tell us a little bit, have you been at Coy the whole time or some other places?
I came into the district in 1999 as a long-term sub at Facet, and ended up staying for two full years. So I had two years at Facet, and then the position opened at Coy, and it just seemed like a real smooth transition to go to Coy. So then I've been at Coy for 21 years. So that's how it adds up to 23. And before that, I was a stay-at-home mom. So I had been out in the classroom for a long time, so got a late start.
Well, we want to congratulate you for sure on all your time. We appreciate everything you've done for every kid from kindergarten to, well, what we have, fifth grade that you've had, show after show after show, and getting these kids ready to sing. And you know, if you remember back when your kids are little, right, getting to that elementary show is an exciting time of the year, and she's been doing that for a long time. So congratulations. And if you'd stay up here for a few minutes. Mike, come on up. Coach Lee, Mike Lee. Don't know why they call him Mike, Coach, Mr. Lee. I'm sure he's been called a few other things over the course of his career, but no, we love Mike. Mike's been in our district now for, I have on my notes, nine years total. Mike came to us as the Clay football coach years ago, did several years coaching. He's been a teacher here at Clay in phys ed and health, maybe a few other things sprinkled in there. If you don't know Coach Lee or Mike Lee, you don't know a person who's always positive, who's always smiling, who's always excited to be here. At least, that's what I see. And I'm super excited for him to retire. I know he's excited because in part, grandkids are getting to a point where he can be a part of that. So anything you'd like to say? I know you've got some folks here with you.
Yeah, I have my wife, my lovely wife Jeanette here, who is my rock. She is it. Three daughters who are, they're not here tonight, but three daughters who are teachers. Their husbands are all teachers, and something that just happens in our family, but the best teacher's right back there, my wife Jeanette.
Definitely a lot of teachers in that family. One of our longtime paraprofessionals, Denise Young, is retiring, and I know she's been a paraprofessional supporting children with special needs around the district for many years. So congratulations to Denise. So let's give her a round of applause. Another name you may know here at Clay High School is Mr. Otter. Mr. Otter is retiring this year after at least 33 years with us. And is Mr. Otter here? Okay, I didn't think I missed him. He has been, most recently, the dean of students and assistant A.D., but he's been a teacher, a special needs teacher, and he's been a coach in all kinds of different sports over the course of years. So we want to certainly thank Mr. Otter for everything he's done for Clay over the years. Another fantastic teacher who could not make it tonight is Donna Uzette. Donna Uzette has dedicated her life, and I know this because I've known her since I started in the district, dedicated her life to children with a lot of baggage, children that need help, children that need the most critical kind of care. And she has done this forever. And we're gonna miss her tremendously. It's a gap that's gonna be very hard to fill, but I do want to put a shout out to her for all her years and all her dedication to kids. We thank Donna Uzette for that. And the woman behind the camera, Dawn Chivoni. Come on up, Dawn. So Dawn is our current director of technology, and she has been with us at Oregon for nine years, but been a resident for a lot longer and had kids go through, and is such a critical part of everything that these kids are experiencing right now. Dawn came in at a time where we just were starting to really understand what it meant to give every single kid a computer and every single teacher something, a device. Like that, it sounds like that's something that just you should always know, but it wasn't nine years ago. And who knows what it'll be in nine years from now. But Dawn has taken us through a tremendous, tremendous transformation in the last nine years, and we were so blessed to have her on board. And I know I've worked with her real close over all those years, so I can't thank her enough for everything she's done. And here's a certificate to thank you. And she's with us till the end of next September, so she's gonna guide us through the transition. So we're very happy to that. Would you like to address it and say anything?
I just want to say it was a pleasure and an honor to serve the district that I was born in, that I was raised in, that I live in, that I put my children through school in. And so it was just an honor to finish these last nine years serving the district of Oregon City Schools. So, thank you.
We have Mr. Chan. Let's get a picture of each of you. Thank you. Congratulations, guys, very much. So if you don't know, each year, we have awards that we give out to teachers and then support staff, and then at the end of the year, an administrator. So each quarter of the year, at least the first three quarters, we give out an OCS Keller Award. And the Keller is named after Tom and Jackie Keller, and Lisa and Jeff Keller, and their daughter Kristen, who donate sponsorship for this, which allows us to give a monetary gift to these individuals with their support. So these are people that are recognized or nominated by their peers along the course of the year, and then those are reviewed, and they win for the quarter, and then they're put in the pot for the teacher of the year, or the support staff of the year, or the administrator of the year. So we've recognized the first two quarters last month, so we want to make sure we recognize the third quarter this year, and then we'll also be recognizing those individuals of the year at an upcoming meeting. So I'm not sure they're all here. I know one's here, but Julie Bedenadetto is a Coy first grade teacher. She won the third quarter OCS Keller Award. So let's give Julie a round of applause. Allison Corrigan, is Allison here? She won the third quarter for the middle grades, and she is a health teacher at Facet. So let's give her a round of applause. Is Erin here? Erin Biker. She's a social studies model, UN teacher here at Clay, so she won the high school third quarter award. Give Erin. And I'm so glad Megan Ferguson is here. Come on up, Megan. Now, I don't have a certificate to give her because we just gave her one. And she received a little, like an award that is made in our engineering class. And then she also gets a $100 gift card, which she got. But the reason I'm really glad she's here, because she had just a little bit of a big job the last couple of years. So I'm not gonna bring up that five-letter word that, you know, we're not really talking about anymore, but if there was ever a person that handled it like a pro, that handled it as calm as you can handle it, I mean, you know what it was like, right? Right, folks? You know what it was like the last two years. You know the range of emotions that people had. She got them all. She got them worse than I ever got them. And I'll tell you what, she handled it with a smile, and she did what was best for kids every single day. And I certainly want to recognize Megan. She's one of my favorites, and she certainly represents all the nurses across the district. We have seven of them in what they do every single day. So again, congratulations on winning, and we appreciate it. Thank you. Lucky you. Thank you, Megan. Thanks for coming out. Okay, that concludes the first portion of the recognition. I'm gonna invite Mrs. Ben up, and we are gonna go through all the career tech, I'm gonna read here, they're the state, they're the career tech students who placed at state competition and qualified for national competition. So I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Becky Ben, the director of career technology here at Oregon. And I'm gonna be calling up each advisor for the programs, and they will be announcing the state, the students who went to state and finished in the top five, as well as who went on to nationals. So our first teacher is Rhonda Hildebrand, and she is the advisor of BPA. This year, we sent seven kids to state, no, 12 kids to state, seven kids to national. So we'll go through who they are. First, I have senior Blake Carrick. He finished second in advanced scholarship applications at the state level, and then he competed again in that at the national level. Next would be my administrative support team. So they went through kind of some changes. At the local level, it was Dominic Resswinkel, Ace Dare, and Theo Porter. And they won at the local, actually, they finished second at the local level, and they weren't supposed to get to go to state, but it's a good thing they did because then they won, or no, they got second at state too. We got all seconds this year, I think, at state. So those three can come up. Then they also competed at the national level. Dawn rejoined the team for national, and Theo decided not to go with us, but he was a part of the big team. And then we had Danny Hollinger at the state in national level, and then we also added Aiden Young. While Dawn's up here, I'll also tell you, he placed ninth at state in database application. That's why he chose to not be on the team at the state level. And then he also received not only his Diplomado Service Award, the Statesman's Service Award, but the top service award in BPA is called the Ambassador Torch Award, and he also received that at nationals this year. Zach Baker, for sure he's not here, but he also finished fifth at the state competition in fundamentals of web design. And then he competed once again at nationals in Texas with the rest of us. And he got one place offstage at nationals. He was 11th at nationals. So, and he called it. He came out of the test, and he looked at me, and he said, I know I missed one question on that test, and I know it's gonna keep me off the stage. And he was right. So he was not happy with himself at all. He also got 12th in a virtual event that goes straight to nationals. So he did really well, but he was just shy of on the stage. So then, next person. So the only one I have left is the one that is Dylan Glajo. He is a junior, and I'm so proud of him. He won computer modeling at the local level, and then we went to state, and he was so down with himself, but he pulled through, and he got second at state. And then we went to national, and we had the whole, like, his computer wouldn't run while we were there, getting ready to go into prelims and everything else. And somehow, he still finished first in his room during prelims, which called him for finals. And then for finals, he got second in the nation. So I'm extremely proud of Dylan. He kept the streak going. We've done really well where we've had people on stage almost for the last 10 years. So it's pretty awesome to have that at national level. And thank goodness he's a junior, so that means he'll be back for California next year. So, thank you. Okay, next, I would like to invite Catherine Segan, our marketing instructor, as well as our DECA advisor.
I apologize I'm losing my voice a little bit, but I'll do my best. So yeah, Catherine Segan, the new marketing instructor and DECA advisor. So at our state competition, we brought 16 students to Columbus. We have three students that qualified in the top five. First is Katie Clark. And Katie Clark got fifth place in our hospitality tourism professional selling event. She did awesome. It's all fun. Next, we have Sophie Crawford. She competed in the financial consulting and got third in the state. So I'll see her here. And last, we have Casey Klein. He got fifth place in our quick serve individual series event, and he did a great job at states as well. Shortly after our state competition, we went to Atlanta, Georgia, where we got to compete in our national competition. Katie was there, as well as Sophie, competing in their events. Katie ended up switching to a different event, our school-based enterprise retail event. So we have our school store here downstairs in Clay, and she got to present on our school store and did very well at nationals. They were very professional, got to network a lot, meet a lot of other DECA members all around the globe, and Atlanta was a great time. So congratulations to all of them.
Okay, our next presenter is Meredith Wolf. She is our environmental agriculture instructor, as well as our FFA advisor.
All right. So ours was a little different in the way that our competitions are all year in various locations throughout the state. So beginning of May, we went to the state convention, and two of our students received their state degrees, which only a very small percentage of Ohio FFA members earn that. There's a big, long list of requirements to earn that. It's very difficult to get. So our first student to receive that was Jasmine Ilavyan. And the second student to receive that award was Elliot Lance. Two teams. Two teams that traveled to Hacking College, which is, if you've ever been to Hacking Hills in southern Ohio, on a Saturday morning, it started at 9:00 a.m. So if you can imagine what time we left here. And so we had a fourth-place individual in the state, and that's Dalton Miller. And then we had a fifth-place team work together to participate in the nature interpretation career development event, and that was Colin Burkey. Brennan Kish. John Witter. Elliot Lance. Savannah Vegas, who I don't believe is here, and Selena Martinez. One individual that placed, individually, that's redundant, but in the floral competition, she earned a fourth-place finish was Gwen Drabaki. She traveled to Ohio State, Ohio. And then our small animal management team went to Columbus, Ohio, to compete in that contest, and they earned first place, which is very, very exciting. They got to go onstage at state convention at the beginning of May. Unfortunately, this is only an Ohio-based event, so they do not unfortunately get to go on to nationals in October, but we're very, very out of them. So earning first-place team was Kira Mauder. We have Addie LaPlante. Marley Stagger. We have Krista Joy Fertney. We have Matilla Mepovich. And then lastly, who I don't believe is here, is Erin Moore. And then one last award that one student did earn was a third-place finish in the state for her proficiency award in agricultural education. She is a Toledo Zoo teacher. A ridiculous amount of hours volunteering at, and that earned her a third-place finish in her proficiency in agricultural education, and that is Addie LaPlante.
So we need to probably get a little closer. So if I can use more, when I kind of wind down to Stagger. Let me get you over here. Okay, our next group is Hosa, and Katie Blair is the medical technologies instructor. She is not with us tonight, so I would like to call up her students. She actually took 21 students to state, and we had a team that competed in
And we had a team that competed in the community awareness and they placed third at states. We have Alyssa Campos. Jenna Eversen. Kayla Hairholser. And Megan Hughes. So these four ladies competed as a team and they made it on to Nationals, which will be in Nashville, Tennessee, June 21st through the 25th. So they will be continuing on with their event. So congratulations. Okay, our next and last group is Anna Skinner. She is our Skills USA Advisor.
Okay, this year, I'm really, really proud of the Skills USA kids. We took an unprecedented 25 students to state this year. And that's never happened before. So our first winner from state to qualify for Nationals is Aurora Edwards, who also received a $3,000 scholarship to Culinary Institute of America. And her contest was restaurant service. Next is our Quiz Bowl team. I know they were worried when they got there and we had a few bumps in the road, but boy, did they shine. First is Brock Morrison. First is Strangham. Nathan Agler, who is not here. Roger Flanagan. And Roger. And Vincent Malatac. And these are, four of these are juniors. So I know they're going to want to go back next year and kick some tush. Sorry. Nobody corrected me before. I'll say it right. Okay, also, for the first time, we had a news broadcasting team from Musical Theater. And those consisted of, and they took second place. These guys took first. All of these guys took first. And by a smidge, these girls took second place in a brand-new contest. Savannah Large in News Broadcasting. Ella Orr, who is not here. Alucia Ackerman. Marcy Stuff. Amazing, I'm sorry.
So again, we're going to have to stagger. So if you want to just window. Let's have a couple more round of applause for their help.
We didn't miss anybody, did we? All right, that's great. Well, that concludes the recognition. So if you do want to sneak out now, it's okay time. Thank you all for coming very much and supporting your kids.
Okay, moving on to item six, public participation in board meetings. All meetings in the board are open to the public. In order for the board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation may be permitted in each meeting. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her names and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Persons desiring more time should follow the procedure of the board and be placed on the regular agenda. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board. The only topic restriction placed on speaking before the board is that no speaker may discuss school personnel issues or any specific personality in a public meeting of the board. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. I have two cards. The first one is from Kylie Tabler.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kylie Tabler. My address is 2952 La Verne Avenue. So before I begin addressing what I want to talk about, I'd like to take time to thank the board for allowing me to speak freely. Without you all, we wouldn't have a platform to voice our opinions. So today I'd like to discuss the success of the Girls' Lacrosse Program over the past five years, but with my main focus being on this year. The program was started during the 2017-2018 school year. And according to the Clay High School Athletic Website, the record during that season was 2 and 13. This year, the record is 13 and 5. They have six returning varsity players from last season, recruiting 16 new girls from the team. Out of the six returning varsity players, they have four with all-conference honors. Three players received second team all league and one player receives honorable mention all league. The current leadership has worked to recruit athletes from other sports and introduce them to something new. The team starters are an even mix of seasoned players and ones that are new to the sport. Here are some interesting and astonishing statistics from this year's season. There are two offensive players that have hit 50 total goals on the season. Our goalie is ranked third in the state for save percentage. There are four players ranked in the state overall. We have multiple players being recruited by colleges to go play lacrosse at the next level. And we have multiple players also playing travel lacrosse. This year, we have picked up wins against Bedford and Northview, two teams that we took losses to last year. However, for this team, the accolades don't matter. They hope to get recognition, but there is more to the game than being the most skilled team out there. These girls played with a lot of heart and have shown vast improvement under their current leadership. The new players have grown to love the game and the returning players have had fun sharing their experiences with their teammates. They look forward to every practice game and team bonding, while many of them have formed friendships outside of the lacrosse field. The Girls' Lacrosse Program has had one of the most successful seasons out of any team this year, but not just statistically. The Girls' Lacrosse Team has been a part of the buzz at Clay in a positive manner. Without the leadership of the program, creating an enjoyable environment for all players, word gets around. Lacrosse is becoming a popular sport all over the country and according to our girls, we have one of the best programs around. It should be known that this program has made such leaps and bounds from when it first started those five years ago. And I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. So thank you and I appreciate you guys for letting me speak.
And let me just say, well done. The way she handled that, I knew she was going to come back and speak. She knew there were parameters and I just want to give kudos to you. That was very well done and message her.
Yes, we appreciate you. And our new speaker is Jen Davis.
Good evening. I'm Jen Davis. I am the mother of Laney. She's a junior. And I have three little ones that are also in the school system. I probably should have not even spoke after Kylie went because she did amazing and said I had a lot of things that I have to say too. Looking at the program from a parent perspective, and I'm also a teacher. I teach at Fort Clinton. And I'm also a coach. So I'm kind of looking at it from all avenues of what this lacrosse season has done. In my house, we live and breathe lacrosse. And so seeing that it's been this growing program has just been really amazing. So a couple of things that have already been said, I just wanted to also kind of go over. The 2019 season, I have those records. We were 5 and 8. Unfortunately, 2020 was canceled. 2021, we were 8 and 10. And then this year, we're 13 and 5, we're third in the track, which is really amazing. And in this 2022 season, first time in program history with a winning record. First time in program history with a victory over Bedford, Slovenia Southview and Slovenia Northview. I think that might have already been mentioned. First time with the JV program. So we have girls that are playing on the varsity team as well, who just picked up a stick this season, which is really amazing when we're playing against teams like Saint Ursula or Notre Dame, who basically were born with sticks on their hands. So our girls are really amazing athletes and it's just been a pleasure to watch them. We have 22 girls on the team and are expecting to have 40 next year. Our girls are talking to other girls and recruiting them. And it's really amazing to see. We also have, like mentioned, we have three girls ranked in the top 10 for ground balls in the state. Am I allowed to say the girls' names and what they're ranked? Is that allowed to say that? Okay. Lexi Huntermark is a junior. She's fourth in ground balls in the state.
Stand up for the junior. Stand up.
Lexi?
Yeah.
She's fourth currently. Now, this is just, this is current. Laney Davis, junior, fifth in the state. Kendra Stevens, junior, seventh in the state. And our goalie, Sydney Whittick, is a junior. She is currently sixth in the state for goals against average and third in the state for save percentage. The team is currently ranked 64th out of 146 teams in the state and 27th out of 69 in Ohio D2. We have had multiple college coaches come to the games to watch our girls and talk to our girls and full girls aside individually. We currently have two graduates that are playing in college and have multiple girls who will be playing lacrosse in the collegiate level. That is their plan. And that is all I have. I just wanted you to be aware of it. Because how many of you have actually been to a lacrosse game, like, ever? I mean, it's really just such a new and awesome sport that we want you to know that, how amazing these girls are and what they're achieving out there. So, thank you.
I was there pre-COVID, but I can't run like those girls.
Yeah, you should come because you need to see Yanni run and she's amazing. Like, she'll just blast everybody. It's really incredible to watch. So, thanks.
Good job, girls. Good job. Thank you.
And if we're going to head into the distance portion, you're welcome to say.
Or you can go to Big Downs for dinner.
Go celebrate. Stay for the meeting.
Onto the Treasuries Report, please. This is Connor, right? Thank you. This won't be quite as exciting. It is. I did send out to you all that bigger five-year forecast. And I'm just going to go over the trends. The trends are looking very good. At the end of the five-year forecast, we still have 65 true cash days, which is well within our 30-90 day request. The SRR funds that we've used to help free up monies in the general fund have greatly helped our cash position. So you can see the trends there. The other thing I sent out to each of you was an updated preparation measure. That's in front of you. And the major adjustment was, of course, to the general fund. I adjusted basically the expenditures based on the amount SRR that is coming out of there. So the other item on the thing is Julian Groob, a three-year engagement for the Gap Financials. We've used them for years. I see your list. They do hundreds, thousands of state entities. So do a good job for us. So unless there are questions, I'm just going to keep it kind of brief tonight after all the celebration.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the Treasuries Report.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion or questions? Roll call. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Sattich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulher? Yes. Does anyone even exist in this session now? There'll be one after. But anyone? Okay, we'll move on to number nine, the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Seven? Discussion? Roll call? Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Sattich?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulher?
Yes.
Can we, are we good?
I'm sorry.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're fine. Yeah.
Okay. So a couple of things I want to clarify and welcome. Couple of people. We have, we just hired four new teachers, so thank you to the board, that will be joining the district. And three of those, I think, are here. So Emily, where's Emily? Over here. Emily Silverston is going to join us as an intervention specialist. No, you're good. You just can stay right there. No, we just, I think you know the board. You've been here and been a part of our district for a long time. But we certainly want to acknowledge and thank you and wish you the best of the board. We're glad you came out tonight. So, thank you. Nathan Moore is kind of in the back. So she's going to be a new signing instructor here at Clay High School. And we want to welcome her and thank her for coming out. And Justin Wharton is over here. And Justin is going to be our new health instructor here at Clay High School and our new varsity wrestling coach. So we are excited to have him back. And to the lacrosse folks that are here, you know, I think there's been a lot of conversation that has been way stretched out of hand. And so I want you to understand that we are well aware of the accomplishments that you guys are having this year. We're well aware of the coaching staff and we're well aware of the people that are making it happen. So I don't want you to take tonight's meeting and take it too far as if there's going to be some dramatic change. Because that's what the feeling is and that's not the case. All right? Just, I wanted to address that with you. I don't want you to leave here tonight with the. Hi, Emma. And who, and who's your wife?
I'm a super.
Yep, welcome and congrats.
Thank you for coming out, all three of you, thank you.
All right.
Okay, new business, athletic trips. We need a motion to approve the following high school athletic trip. Voice basketball, Emily Bluff and Adrian in June 22. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Item B, we need a motion to approve the list of Clay High School graduates pending fulfillment of state and local requirements. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Item B, we need a motion to approve the list of Clay High School graduates pending fulfillment of state and local requirements. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Item C, student meal prices for the 22-23 school year. We need a motion to approve the state meal prices as presented below. These prices reflect a 25 cent increase. High school, 350, children had 235, 225, 325, for goodness sakes. Intermediate, $3, elementary, $3, and breakfast, $2. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
What is the nature of rationale behind the increase?
So, yeah, I talked to Julie, our food services today, and really, there's, there's kinda three things. One, being, main reason being commodity prices are through the roof right now and there's a, there's a formula, the USDA, it's called the Price Lunch Equity Formula, that you do periodically. I couldn't tell you the details, but this is the, the number that came back through that and it's right in line with other school districts. She also did a, a survey of other school districts, but, but off the top, she goes commodity prices.
Yes. And is the, because right now lunch is still...
Yeah, it's not gonna be that way.
Family should expect that that will not continue.
Correct, good question. Yep, good question.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, then roll call? Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Item D, bus bid resolution. Whereas the Oregon Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of three 71-passenger conventional-type school buses. Therefore, be it resolved, the Oregon Board of Education wishes to participate and authorize metasolutions to advertise and receive bids on said board's behalf as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of three 71-passenger conventional school buses. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Item E, public records training. The Board of Education appoints the treasurer CFO, Jane Pruth, as its designated for public records training. Do we have to vote on that? Do we?
I wanna say, I don't think you do, if you're appointing me. I, you know, you don't need to and, and we wanna try and remember to get this on the organizational meeting. You know, we did it late this last time and, yeah, so try and remember that.
Okay, then item F, the Star Elementary School Boiler Project. Bids were received from the following companies, Titan Mechanical, 251,900, Positive Trades Group, 286,208, Dynet, 300,000, Bayes Incorporated, 312,950, and Warner Mechanical did not bid. May I have a motion, please, to take the Titan Mechanical amount? Project to begin June 1st and allocated ESTR 3 funds will be used. So I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Item G, disposal of equipment and materials. We need a motion to dispose of the following. These are from Cardinal Stretch High School, the computers, 348 Chromebooks, 107 books. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
I do wanna clarify, the books are from district, the computers are from stretch. Okay, donations? We need a motion to accept the following donations to the band program at Eisenhower Intermediate. A silver trumpet, Oldsmobile N810M, serial number 809913, from Haley Reynolds, and a silver flute, Oldsmobile NFL110, serial number 110436, from Cassidy Noak. May I have a motion, please?
So moved with thanks. Yes. Second?
So moved with additional thanks.
Discussion? Roll call? Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes, with thanks.
And Mrs. Mulnar? With even more thanks. All right, we got it. Disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed on the April 25th agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. And moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Mulnar, quick one here tonight, thought it would be kind of a long meeting, but, uh, why don't you know we haven't forgotten our strategic plan in any way, just May is a, is a very busy and that's why we, we actually said July and then that will become the focus here after, after May, the end of May, so I just wanted to bring that back. It is by no means forgotten, we're still, we're probably away, but we'll kinda put it on hold for a couple of weeks and get through here today. Mrs. Cathers asked for some additional information at the last meeting just regarding kinda service breakdown. So, if, if you kinda look at how we haven't broken down, this is based on our records, on, on the amount of years that our, our administrators and teachers have with us. Now, there may be people that have more years elsewhere that we don't fill up or whatever, without check, you know, there's no way to check statements, but if you look at kind of the, the breakdown, it's, it's pretty steady the first several years, when you just kinda get a quick glance and it kinda tails off. So, you know, I think we're in very, very good shape with, with strong young teachers and, and people that are gonna be around for, for quite some time. So it's a little bit different when you start looking kind of at the administrators as, as you see as they get up there, but, but still, there's kind of a, you know, a spread out amount of years that, that we have. So just bringing that to your attention for what it's worth. So, I don't know, any questions or anything that you, that you have that helpful or it gives you kind of a breakdown and kinda where we're at? It was very helpful for me because it's something I haven't really looked at in some time, so. And just an update on the Formant Arts Center, where, where it's, if you've been by it, it's starting to come together on the external with windows and so forth. We're, we're a little concerned about the panels, cement panels that go on. I'm looking at Dean here, but, but we're not sure where they are. One of those 500 ships that are stuck out of sea, maybe, we're, we're hoping, so we're, we're gonna get an update, I think, here in the coming days on, on the panels, so. But the interiors roll in, the windows are in, the roof, which was originally a concern, is, is done. We're already speculating about the grand opening and how we're gonna, how we're gonna do that with our, our donors and how we're gonna involve our kids with Mr. Dean, so it's gonna be a lot of fun, but more to come on the exact time line on it. We're fairly certain the building will be able to be used by kids to start the year. We're not so sure what it's gonna look like on the outside to start the year, if that makes any sense. So we'll know more later. So that's my quick report tonight, listeners, a topic anybody else has questions about.
Any questions?
Good.
Okay, any old business? Okay, moving to board committee reports, finance.
Mrs. Bruce, very nice job of covering your vein, we discussed in our finance meetings last week.
Good, good, thank you. Captain, improvements?
Most of the items that were discussed, we wrote it down in the boiler, we discussed the fine arts and a few other projects, the, the roof, that, Mr. Gregory just...
Sorry, I stole your thunder.
Yeah, well, almost everything that was discussed in the meeting. So anyway, that, some other projects for the summer reconstruction, asphalt, different things that are being bid out and discussed will be handled in the near future. A lot of work, Captain, Mr. Sandwich does a lot of work during the summertime and his crews are diligent and I'm sure they're already started, even though graduations right at hand, they'll be working very, very diligently. So thank you, Mr. Sandwich, for all the work.
Thank you. Policy personnel, we have no new policies sent to us from the state. Personnel, we just hired three people. Academic?
We had a lengthy meeting last week. As we're getting near the end of the academic year, there are a lot of major dates coming up, as well as test results that are beginning to drift in from Columbus. Begin, however, with the P D Day, I'm being the third one, I extend a thank you to S and D Capital for providing lunch for all those who participated in that, that, that particular event. English Language Arts Adoption, latest news amongst the grade 5th graders, teachers and staff have chosen wonders by McCraw Hill. The 6th grade, they're leaning to literature, Houghton, Dinsley, and Harcourt. 7th and 8th grade piloting the literature, Houghton, Dinsley, and Harcourt. The 5th through 8th grade gifted and talented, they will continue with springboard. We talked about summer programming, we have a variety of tutoring opportunities that are gonna be available for our children in the district and we're very grateful for all of the teachers who have stepped forward to help support and, and assist our, our, our kids throughout the year. We're still fighting the results of COVID and thankfully, we're getting great support from them to, to help our children. AP exams took place through yesterday, it was the last, two days ago, excuse me, the last day for the AP exam. I ready reading and math spring benchmarking is taking place through the 20th this week. Clay exams, I know you're all looking forward to those dramatically, aren't you? May 25th through the 27th, so we've got Clay exams, May 25th through the 27th. Final grades are due June 3rd. Printed grade summaries will go home with kindergarten through 4th grade on May 27th. Grades 5 through 8 will most likely be final on May 27th. Then Clay has until June 3rd to finalize grades due to exams, but most will be done before that. We spent quite a bit of time at the meeting talking about state testing results. State test scores were result, were released for math, science, and social studies just in the last few days. English Language Arts will be released in June. We, some things that, that, the initial run-through that we're, we're noticing in this process, 3rd grade math modeling and reasoning showed improvements for Coy and Starr. Starr did show a decrease in the area of geometry and Jerusalem did see a decrease in the area of fractions. In 4th grade math, Jerusalem, the KU scored higher than the rest of the district. We've done a really, really good job in the 4th grade math there. 5th grade math, the number of above proficient students in the area of geometry, it's an area that we wanna work on, it's a real area of opportunity for the district. 6th grade math, positive progress was made in most areas and that was a really, really nice thing. 7th grade math, ratios and proportions improved, modeling and reasoning, they continue to be an area of opportunity for us that, that we will be working on here in the coming years. 8th grade math, there were a large number of students who scored in a limited range. We'd like to see improvement there as well as in the advanced category. Algebra 1, in Facet, the percentage of students scoring above proficient improved in the area of functions. 27% of our children scored basic. The percentage of students scoring accelerated increased, again, that's another opportunity for us, an area where we can work on as a group to, to improve. Algebra 1 at Clay High School, Clay's average was above the state average. In geometry, the percentage of student scoring advanced increased. Neural changes in 5th grade science, 8th grade science could show positive progress in most areas. In the area of biology, diversity and interdependence of life and cells is an opportunity for us going forward. American history, 1945 to present and skills and documents, again, an area of opportunity. And our American government, Ohio policy and economy continues to be an area of opportunity. So, we've had some areas that we've, we've done well in and we've had some areas that are opportunity and that's one of the things that we talked about going with the strategic plan. We feel very strongly, Mrs. Cathers and I have had numerous discussions with the leadership here of the district, that we want to have some analytics tied and some, some, to be able to show, to set some goals and some actually measurable analytics in our, in our school system. That's one of the things that we'll be discussing heavily at the next academic school.
Thank you. Do I have a legislative achievement? A legislative liaison?
Uh, no.
I think, okay. See any achievement? Thank you.
A whole bunch of them so far.
Absolutely. Those are the, those are the times that they're so proud of all of our kids. Moving on to board discussion. I have a couple of things. Jackson, Jackson Shortridge from Facet placed in the top 2% nationally in Word Masters. There were only 36 students across the United States and he's one of ours, so, yeah. Lisa Keller, a teacher at Jerusalem, won a grant to give all students a book from K through 6. Nolan Falls, the Clay Social Studies teacher, was given the honor of Extraordinary Teacher of the Year from Sun Credit Union. Megan Porter, our star music teacher, won the Outstanding Music Educator from the Ohio Symphony. And, um, I think it's two weeks ago, the Jazz Band from Clay, that's an 8th grade band, and the 5-6 choir all went to a Cedar Point Music Festival, they all came back with gold. So that's another big recognition, I think, and especially since our 5-6 choir, it's the first year, they did not have that before, so that's good, really good, very proud of them. And from that choir, Eddie Watson was named the Outstanding Vocalist of the Year. From 5th and 6th grade, wow, great. That's what I have. Oh, food trucks tomorrow.
Tomorrow, 3:30? Come on out. Competition, three Clay food trucks, one Whitver, and the kids are gonna actually run their own business, so you can come out and, they'll, they'll go till they sell out of food, that's kinda the, the way it works. So you better get there early. So it's a neat thing, if you did, if you were there last year, it was, it was pretty cool.
Did you say 3:30?
3:30 to 6 or something.
Pickup dinner.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Anything? Okay. Then we need to talk about board meeting for June. Mrs. Bruce has a kind of like a June 21st.
I know, could I, I can zoom in, I don't, doesn't matter, I mean, to, I can do that too, I mean, whatever works for you guys. I, I'm gonna be quite a married.
It might be easier if we, if we can reschedule, if we can.
Fight is not.
But realistically, Jane would be able to be absolutely, if she gives a summer report, that would be.
I'm on both of it, that's, that's, we're also need the date.
Or if she wants to zoom in with your travels, you know, don't hinder your travel, rather if you felt that you could zoom in, then we'd find it.
Well, we'll probably have another meeting later in the month, so we can do the financial report then too.